Yep. All right, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call this meeting of the Madeira Beach Planning Commission to order. It is six o'clock on the money. Please call the roll.
Chairman Wykoff?
Present.
Commissioner Gavahy?
Present.
Commissioner Dillon?
Here.
Commissioner Noble? Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Marr? Commissioner LaRue?
Here.
All right, looks like we've got a quorum. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Public participation, of course, is encouraged at all of our meetings. If you're addressing the Planning Commission, please step up to the podium, state your name and your address. For the record, please limit your comments to three minutes. Please don't include any item on the agenda as your comment. We will have time for that when we hit that agenda item. However, it should be noted that an agenda item was pulled. So if you have a comment on that, please feel free to do it now during public comments. But that agenda item has been pulled, and that was the redevelopment for 13117 Fourth Street. Public comments are welcome, and I welcome you to step forward at this point. Went through all that for nothing. Okay. All right. She does. She will throw things at me if I don't do that, so thank you. Our next item is the approval of the minutes. I would like a motion, if you so please, to approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as stated from last month.
I second it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Anybody offering up any corrections? We good to go? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRue? Commissioner Gavahy?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. All right, the minutes are approved. Thank you very much. So having that application for 13117 Fourth Street pulled, that means we have no new business. I see no old business. This should be a pretty short meeting if Jenny has anything to do with it. So our administrative or staff presentation is item 7A, Johns Pass Village zoning.
All right, I'll take it away.
Thank you.
So on March 13, it's a few weeks ago, the BOC approved adopting ordinance 2023-01 and 2023-02, which basically approved the special area plan for Johns Pass Village Activity Center and then changed our map, our future land use map, to incorporate that activity center. So now we have an activity center, the Johns Pass Village Activity Center. We have that at the county level. We have that locally. Now, the next step in this is the zoning. So that's what we're going to start talking about today. And we've had a little bit of discussion on that before, a little bit of a presentation. So I have in your packet, I'll pull it up here, two. It's kind of a starting point of, we wanted to bring up, because we figured these are going to be the hot topics, the setbacks and the height. So we've included, on page 20, starting at page 20 of the packet, we have the character districts, the existing zoning category, existing height. And that's where we measure it from, design flood elevation. Easiest way to imagine that is the second floor of a building. And then on the ground highest building, these are measured from grade. So that can be a little tricky to imagine. Let me make this a little bigger. I didn't realize it was so small up there. And then the proposed height, just kind of what we internally have talked about. We really just wanted to have like a kickoff area so we can start discussing this. So it's not just free for all. We can see your input. We'll also have three public meetings. We'll have one on April the 13th, which is a Saturday from 10 to noon. We'll have one on April the 18th, which is a Thursday, 10 to noon. And then a third public workshop on the 20th, 1 to 3. So the 13th and the 18th, those are both 10 to noon. And then the 20th, which is a Saturday, 1 to 3. So that'll be after the Hurricane Expo, on that same day, on the 20th. And we are mailing out postcards to every single resident. So what we have in your packet, we have the height. And then we also have in here the setbacks. Something very similar to the height. We have character district, zoning category, existing setbacks on the ground. And where you see like no, no numbers, that's where we're still collecting data. And then proposed setbacks. And anywhere in the red on both of these sheets, that's where we see any changes.
Jenny, can I ask you a quick question back up to the first table you showed? Do we have, never mind, I already answered my question. What's wrong?
Okay.
Let me, sorry about that. We also have a site plan of an existing structure down there that shows the height and the setbacks. Now, we wanted to show you an example of why we proposed the 60 feet. Because there are a few six and seven-story buildings mixed in down there in multiple of the character districts, including, because the parking garage down there is six floors of parking. Many of the condo buildings are six stories. And then like Barefoot Beach Club and I think Madeira Bay each have seven stories. But one has just one ground floor of parking. And then the Madeira Bay buildings has two floors of parking.
Which we have right here. So this, oh, this is Madeira Bay, that's seven stories. And then the six stories, I think that was Barefoot Beach. So I don't know if we want to go to the example first or if we just want to dive in to, I guess we can go to the example, kind of show you where that design flood elevation, where we calculate the height in our code. And in the past, depends on when it was built. Some of them, I think Barefoot Beach Club, their PD references the base flood elevation, not design flood elevation, of where they calculated the height. Before that, there were sometimes they calculated from the ground. So it wasn't consistent. Now it's consistent in how we measure the height. It's always design flood elevation, which is the base flood elevation plus a freeboard, which we have four feet.
Is that two feet freeboard?
We have four feet.
Four feet.
We used to be two, now we're four. It was back in 2021, I believe. So here's Barefoot. So this is, to give you an example of where we measure the height. So right here is four feet above base flood elevation, which now is the design flood elevation. This is where the first, you know, above parking and above what's floodproofed. So you see, it's a second story. So that's really where we start measuring the height. So as you can see, from DFE, then we measure to the first occupied, height to the top of the last occupied floor, that's really the height. And there is a section in our code, let me scroll back, where there's certain exceptions to the height. So chimney, cooling towers, elevators, fire towers, stairways, architectural features, those can exceed that height. But it can't be-
Not habitable space?
Yeah, so it can't be over 20 feet of what the height is. So also keep that in mind when we're talking about height. So if we go back to Barefoot, we can see, okay, well, this is where we would measure the height. Here's the design flood elevation. So we're starting here. And we go up, okay, you see, this is the, this is air-conditioned area. So, okay, that's where we are measuring the height, from there to there. And then all of this architectural features, the tops of buildings, we wouldn't count that in the height.
Jenny, one question. Sometimes you have flat roof, sometimes you have hip roof. So how do you, do you go to the center, to the middle of hip roof, or?
It's the eve line, isn't it?
No, there's, I think it's like R2, R1 that talks about the eve and then talks about the top of the roof. I think that's the only area that does. Is that right, Marcy?
Yeah, and we typically would measure to, if it's habitable space, we would measure to the peak of that. If it's your home and you're living in that floor, we'd measure to the peak of that roof. But if it's the top of the elevator shaft, then that, that's when you kind of get that extra 20 foot, the bonus, yeah. And we also have pitch regulations on the roof.
I heard Jenny talk about occupied floor.
So for us, like if it, that, if there's an area above that's AC'd, then we would measure to that. So if they've enclosed an area and it's air-conditioned, then we would count that in this particular case.
Yeah, yeah, that's-
Isn't that the building that's kind of under dispute? That they're trying to put a restaurant up there and have all kinds of people?
They were trying to get an alcohol license, and then that was pulled. It was a few months ago, maybe end of last year. But, yeah, this is like the rooftop area that is enclosed. But then over here, just like Marcy was saying, if it's the top of an elevator, stairways, things of that nature, the things that are listed in this, exceptions to the height regulations, that's, that's what we wouldn't count.
So if they didn't want to have, let's say, not this particular one, but just the building in general wanted to have a restaurant or bar on top, and they had an enclosed area, the height of that would be what we'd go off of. So they wouldn't just get to throw it up there and not have it included in the height. We would look at that. So once they start to get to the roof area and utilizing that, we're very particular about kind of how we try to guide them through that, through lessons learned.
Okay, so then that would be, would that be considered another floor or roof space?
I think, I think that's where it gets tricky. And that's why in all of our zoning districts, we've really referred back to just the height and feet. And not, oh, you can have X amount of floors over, over parking. Because there can be a discussion and dispute over, well, what's technically a floor or a story? And our code isn't very clear. I think it's with floor, floor, right? It, it's really not clear in our code on those definitions. So that's why we've, you know, starting years ago, that we just really just went with, okay, we're just going to go with feet. You know, how many feet above the DFE? Instead of, you can have three floors over parking. Because then you're, how big are the floors going to be? What do you consider a floor? Are you going to have rooftop? Do we consider that a floor? Typically, yes. Depends on, on what it's utilized for. So that's why we just are going with feet, and we're going to continue doing that.
So was that building an oops? Because as I'm looking, that would be Johns Pass Resort area that was 44 feet from DFE.
This is a PD, so they went, they rezoned it to a planned development. So they asked for additional height. They're within their height that was approved.
Okay, see, and I think that would be a very good example for the people to realize that that's how you can get higher floors. It wasn't originally approved under our normal standards. And I think that's where a lot of the people are like, so if you're changing it from 44 feet to 60 feet, and you're 60 feet plus DFE, so you're basically potentially 74 feet. And that's where, you know, when I was here the other day, it's just like, it, I mean, you know, I consider myself pretty knowledgeable, but I didn't really know what DFE was.
Hard to imagine, too.
And, and the DFE, I would say that would, you'd need to get kind of an idea of what the ground elevations are in those areas so that we, so that the people know what they're getting. So like in terms of it, if it's, you know, at two foot, if the elevations around there are two foot, well, okay, so the first floor's got to be at, you know, 12 feet above that to get the DFE. So you're, so you're 12 feet there, and then another 70 feet. So now you're another 60 feet, so your total is 70, 72 feet. And that's where I had wondered the other day in terms of trying to make it, you know, it's the KISS principle, keep it simple, stupid, you know? So just so that people have the idea. And like you said, that's an example, but that example was done through a PD. But then you've also got the one right across the street, which, I guess, was that a PD also?
Variances.
It actually was done with variances, yeah, which is different as well. I guess it's kind of hard because we're looking at, we've been trying to look for site plans and building plans, but a lot of these buildings are older, so we don't have all the plans. Barefoot Beach is a newer one, so we have those plans. It's very clearly indicated on the heights, so that's why it's one of the examples.
So there, there are a lot of condo buildings that were built in the 70s and early 80s that are five stories over parking, or I guess six floors, that currently don't meet our height limit of 44 feet above DFE. So that's one of the reasons, one of the goals of this was to make things conforming, so to legalize these existing buildings also. Because we don't want to allow for additional height, but we want to make sure that everyone is accounted for and that, within a reasonable degree, that things are now brought to, because, because it's kind of weird back in the, they cut the height. Because it seems kind of unfair that some property owners got taller, and then other people that didn't build before that was implemented now lost like, probably like two stories. So this is basically fixing a previous mistake that probably shouldn't have happened back then. And the other limits we want to include, though, is requiring a certain amount of land to allow for that height. Most of the buildings that are this height usually have at least half an acre or closer to an acre. So potentially, we could require at least half an acre of land to allow for that height. We could require additional setbacks. So there's ways to mitigate it, especially because there are some single-family homes mixed in there, so we don't want super tall buildings right next to people's houses. So requiring additional setback or a certain amount of land or landscaping would be important.
Good stuff.
So I have a, I have a question for Jenny. Sorry. You had mentioned that the top floor could be occupied for like a restaurant, right? In some cases?
Yeah, it depends on the zoning and, yeah, we're just going to talk about-
My question is, as far as floor area ratio, would you include that top level as your floor area ratio?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Unless if it's open and doesn't meet the definition of our gross floor area. But something like in Barefoot Beach where it's enclosed, yes, that would.
I see. So if it's open to air, it's not included in your floor area ratio? Even though they can use it for like a bar?
Yes, if it was completely open, if they just had seats out there, it's completely open.
Okay, thank you. So I have a question real quick. Kind of to Chuck's point. And as we have these meetings coming up with the public, you know, if there's a way to, because even myself, when you say five stories, to your point, sometimes that doesn't mean 50 feet. Sometimes it means 60, sometimes it means, you know? So if there's a way, and I, I think Andrew mentioned it earlier, where you have a plan that kind of shows, like, okay, we have this plan, which shows our zoning, right? But that kind of gives an overlay of the actual feet above grade or above DFE for the existing structures. I mean, that could be a kind of a task, but that way people know, like, okay, this structure that I'm used to seeing is 40 feet above DFE or 60 feet above DFE. I don't know, I feel like that, you know?
So, so will you pull up the one we just were showing, out of curiosity? I just want to make sure I understand. So on this one, that's kind of why I tried to grab this one, is to show the height of the actual building above. Would you like to see it differently? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying, yeah, so, so I guess what I'm saying is in, in like plan view, so like over top of this, where it's like, okay, like I know, like, this property here is 40 feet above DFE. This property's 60 feet above DFE. Because people drive by it every day and have it in their brain. Hey, the Bubba Gump building is, okay, that one's 60 feet above DFE. Otherwise, it's hard to like mentally think about what is what. Because like I said, you could say five stories, six stories, and it just doesn't mean anything. So, and then to Andrew's point, with just things that are already non-conforming, it kind of shows, hey, like, these things exist already. It just helps explain it a little better. Otherwise, everyone's just going to get, I don't know, could get really-
I guess in a way, it's kind of like how we can sell it that we've accepted it. And/or like he said, you know, if you point out, okay, so Bubba Gumps is this high, the parking garage is this high. And, and just to define some of the areas within the areas, so we can say, oh, absolutely.
So what you'd like to see with this one is us to point to the map and say, and Barefoot Beach is located here, this is the height above DFE, this is the picture of the-
Right. So if I, if I were looking at this map from this, I could, I could very clearly define in my brain that the transition of height between the transitional area, which is this, to the core, to the boardwalk, is like, oh, I'm seeing this kind of go from 80 feet to 40 feet to 60 feet. So, because in my brain, right, is your, the activity center is kind of bookended by this, which is very tall, and the, compared to what's normally in Madeira Beach, and the boardwalk. So when you can see, okay, so the bounds of this is 60 feet to 60 feet, and anything in between that, like, I don't know, I just, I feel like it would help explain it or show it to people.
We've been trying to find older site plans of some of those, those six-story condo buildings, and it's been, we'll keep looking, because that's one of the reasons why not all those existing ones were shown in feet. Because if it's like newer plans that have been done last 10 years or so, we have those usually on record, and they're easy to find. But some of these buildings were built 40-plus years ago. Would you want a map showing existing heights that we can find versus proposed? Like, have two maps, I guess?
Well, I think, I think if you have the existing heights, so people can understand, like, well, the proposed height is, here is 50 feet, and the current things are 30 feet. Like, you know, like, I don't know if we need a proposed map. We just, just existing would be ideal.
Maybe if you pulled one building out of each character district-
Sure, sure.
That said, like, find the tallest building in each character district, because that's going to be the concern, right? Is the overall height.
Yeah, you're not going to get every one of them.
So if you pulled the tallest building out of each one of the potential character districts, and say, this is the tallest building here, it's Barefoot Beach Club. And, and we won't be going that high, or we will, whatever the number is, right? And then maybe the other district is, is the parking garage, right? And so this is the tallest building there, and it will be, compared to that, it's this. That way, you don't have to try and get, you know, from Crimson and Madeira Norte and all, you know, you don't have to get every building, but get a sampling, one, the worst one or the highest one from each-
Yeah, or just in a general area. I mean, if you can get just whatever you can get. And if you do it in terms of, if you do it in terms of DFE, so people, so you don't have to think about what DFE is, you just say, this is 50 feet above DFE.
Yeah, I think people need a point of reference.
Yeah, right, just get multiple points of reference from all the different districts, whatever you can. And I think on a site plan would be helpful.
Somebody sees 60 feet, they go, ah, you know, they're going to run all their hair on fire. So if you can get it to compare to something that's already there, at least it gives like, okay, I, like, I can see that now. You know, this is 80 feet or whatever it is from the ground. We're talking about 82 feet. So that's a little easier to swallow, and they say, well, what we're proposing is 60 feet. Okay, cool, now I get it, right? It's not going to be a, I, I think everybody's worried that we're going to be driving down a canyon on Gulf Boulevard, right? And nobody wants that. So if, if, we've got to show that that's not the intent or the spirit of what's trying to be accomplished, and you could do that by giving a frame of reference, I think.
And that's kind of the direction I was headed. This was one of the easiest ones to kind of grab and start. So wanted to definitely get your feedback on what you thought was helpful. To Andrew's point, we were trying to pull some of the site plans. So I think the one thing we're missing here, though, is tying this location into the site plan so that you can easily say, okay, location A, Barefoot Beach, this high. Location B, in this new district, is this building. So we can do that. So that's exactly kind of the feedback we were looking for from sharing this with you tonight. So this is perfect.
We did, we did try to keep the heights on certain districts, like Boardwalk and the low-intensity mixed-use and traditional village, lower to make sure not to block any views or-
Sure.
So we really tried to make sure the village area stayed the same and that the heights proposed in Johns Pass Resort and the transitional matched the existing condo and temporary lodging buildings that are currently there. But we can definitely work on a map to visualize and show it. Because at the end of the day, on a positive note, even the tallest buildings down there are much smaller than anything you'd see in Clearwater Beach or St. Pete Beach.
For sure.
Like, people, on a positive note, those types of buildings wouldn't be allowed and aren't currently built there. But visualizing it to show that, that's not a scary height, because 60 sounds like a lot, but in reality, there's buildings that are exist that are that around that.
Right, that's exactly our point. And we just want to make that easy for people to grasp. Like, you get it, I get it, we get it, but we want to make sure somebody reading the proposal gets it or comes to one of the workshops gets it.
In the previous master plan, they proposed on the beach side, like six stories or five stories over parking in the, in the previous master plan. So it, it's not like we're the first people to, that's what even back then was, was proposed on, similar to that. We wanted to do, to give a little more flexibility on heights. Because people like taller ceilings in their rooms. They don't want to feel like, like enclosed too much. Because sometimes older, they had, or even the parking garage, the floors are closer together. So it's kind of tough trying to find that balance between allowing some flexibility, but not too much to, because we don't want super tall buildings either. So we tried to find that balance.
So one other question. Is, is our height measured from, is, is, for instance, measured from DFE? Was DFE based on FEMA or is it based on Pinellas County vulnerability?
It's based on the, the firm, so FEMA, the FEMA maps. We haven't adopted the vulnerability study that Pinellas County has done as our, as our base maps.
Many cities have, I just went-
Yes, yeah, many cities have. And I think whenever they, that Pinellas County was finishing up those maps, we had to adopt, the clock was running down of when we, we had to adopt some map, one of the maps, and Pinellas County was just coming out with their maps, so, in 2021. So we went, we went with the firm, the FEMA map. And we also adopted that higher freeboard-
Yes.
Because we knew that the studies showed that, you know, the firm wasn't completely accurate, and Pinellas County's study was more accurate than what the firm was. So we were trying to balance that with a higher freeboard. So in case if we do want to adopt the county's maps, then we could kind of readjust that, and it wouldn't be so off, yeah.
Thank you.
Finally, is there, there used to be some devices that could measure things? You know, Google Maps and all that. So if you could go to the ceiling of a building and then measure down, the roof of a building and then measure down to the ground, to make it simpler, like, okay, so this structure is 63 feet. I mean, you know, and I know they used to have measuring devices, but, you know, something as simple as that, and you could go through and identify, okay, so this building's this tall, this one's this tall, this one's this tall. And, and not necessarily having to get plans, you know, to show, because once again, it's just like, if, if you- plans, you know, to show, because once again, it's just like, if, if you say it's sixty-two feet, nobody's gonna go out and measure, okay, it's no sixty-one point nine. And, and I don't know whether or not there are those capabilities of measuring distances. I think there used to be.
I know, I know we can do it in plan view, profile view, because it gets distorted on Google sometimes when you're looking at it from the street view. I think height may be a little, but there may be some other software that would allow us to do it. I'd, I'd have to look and see. If I could, yeah, check, like, go to Google, measure the height, and it matches what I have on the plan, then I would feel comfortable doing it, but I'd have to see if we can do it in, in the profile.
I mean, I think that would save a whole lot of time, because then basically you can, you can identify almost every building, simply.
Yeah. I'd have to see if you can do it in section view, so yeah, we could definitely look at that.
Yeah, I definitely did not intend to say, hey, go out and take a laser measure and hit every building, but, yeah, I wonder if maybe can GIS do that, too, maybe? I don't know if it can.
We have, we can do laser height measurements, and we would have to, I'd have to take it out, and I know we do it inside the buildings, I'd have to see, get with Frank and see what its capabilities are externally, if there was, you know, a balcony or something that came over, and we could shoot that and kind of gut-check it from there, but, yeah, we can definitely, you know, do something like that.
Like, for, you know, last resort, almost, you know? If you feel like you need to fill in some gaps on that map, you know, maybe it's worth it, just to, but, to Mike's point, I mean, I think, I think that just getting a sample set is probably good enough, to me, anyway.
Okay. By chance, do you know what, on Pelican Lane, that four-story building, it's three floors, and the garage is, or says underneath parking, it's brand-new? It's going up now.
I think that one's forty-four feet.
Is it?
I believe it's forty-four above DFE.
Forty-four. You can see that from, you can see that from Gulf Boulevard if you drive by, because it towers up over all of the stores.
And I can tell you when they start work in the morning and when they finish.
Yeah. If you think about that, at forty-four feet, and you add another sixteen to it, you can basically visualize, and that basically is the entrance into where all of this is going to happen. So it's gonna be a progression upwards.
Yeah, and I would have to look at the plans, because I can't remember if the stairways or stairwells counted for that height. It's been a while.
Yeah, and also, we're not proposing any height increases in that area. We are keeping it exactly the same as what it is currently.
So it's gonna stay at forty-four?
Correct. The only places we're proposing the sixty feet are areas where there are actual buildings at that, around that height currently, because as I said, we don't want to increase heights where it's unnecessary to do that, because in the, we're, we're keeping the height of the same in the village and the boardwalk and along Pelican Lane, so...
I guess it would just be boardwalk and the village of, it's hard, because so many of the buildings that were built in Traditional Village were before the zoning code, so we don't have a lot of those building plans in the height of that area. And then Boardwalk, I know we have, like, the garage, Bubba Gumps, I don't know if we have the height of, on that side, I know we have the height of the garage on, like, the commercial core area.
One, yeah. One option with Village we could do, since, like, the triangle lot is potentially where the city parking lot would go, we could just, like, write thirty-four feet or forty-four within a half an acre, acre of land, depending on how much, because, because I, I agree, we don't want buildings towering over on the outside parts of it, so to cap it, it, let's, and the boardwalk, let's say we kept it at the thirty-four, and in Village, on, on one side of Village, it was kept at thirty-four, and potentially in the triangle thing, it was, because that's where the city parking garage would go. That, that is one option. That's why we wanted to require land, so just in case if we need to add more buffering or setback to mitigate that height.
As it looks, the developer has three more lots that are vacant, that he looks like he's going to continue building, and they're so square and so plain that, and you see it, it just, and I just said to these two gentlemen, why didn't that come before us? Because...
It didn't have to, it's conforming.
I know that, but, you know, just architecturally, if I'm looking at something, why do I have to look at a shoebox?
You don't, I do, I live across the water from it.
Well, I, I understand that, it's the same thing with the Cambria, and the other...
Yeah.
And we don't have design guidelines, which is what we will be writing in this section.
Yeah, that's part of the fatal flaw we have, there are no architectural guidelines.
There's nothing for us, even as staff, to say, oh, you have to make it appear like this.
Lot line to lot line.
But that's not my fault. My, my fault is, everybody visually is looking at this.
Yep.
You bought the property, you made the commitment, however you work out the square footage, but it doesn't have to be a square block building. That's my opinion.
I don't disagree with you.
You know...
A lot of the reason that happens, too, and it's, it's frustrating, because we do have small lots, and everybody wants to absolutely maximize their setbacks, and so it, it does force us into the situation that you're talking about.
That's a whole different set of meetings.
Yes, but it, within this zoning with John's Pass, we are proposing, we are going to put in design guidelines. We will be.
I pray.
Yes.
All right. Moving right along?
Yeah, one other question, if you don't mind. How much would the special magistrate have flexibility in increasing, let's say, height that we are trying to set?
So with height, we really are looking for PD, so it'd be a rezone to PD, and then that would go to Planning Commission and VOC.
Wouldn't the magistrate only have under jurisdiction variances, and with a variance, you have to prove a hardship?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's, it's quite difficult.
But needing more height to build more units is not a hardship?
No, no. So that's why you would have to go through the PD.
And, and any, and because of the special area plan and the future land use, even if someone did try to rezone, they'd still be stuck dealing with the special area plan, so that would really limit what they could do, because they'd still have to make it look like John's Pass, so a twelve-story building isn't John's Pass, so, like, they're still stuck dealing with that. So luckily, because we were so strict with regulate, like, we tried to make sure to protect the community from scenarios like that.
Excellent. All right. What else you got?
Really just have John's Pass. So if we want to go to the zone, and the setbacks, and we kind of talked about the height and how, how we can visualize that at these meetings, so that was great input. If we want to go to the setbacks, I mean, kind of, because we can go to the Barefoot Beach, we really just tackled Barefoot Beach as, like, the first thing. We knew that we had, you know, more recent plans on the height, so just trying to see what that looks like, what we could put together for these meetings, and obviously, we'll do it for other buildings as well, but just trying to see what that looks like, if it's too much for, this, I know, has a lot of pictures going on here, so it's very busy, but we're just trying to figure out how to visualize this, how to show it to the public at these public workshops, and what works, what doesn't work, what makes sense. So this is what we put together the last few days.
Yeah, so like, when we get the site plan, when we look at setbacks, we look at the, the outermost edge of the structure as related to the property line, and those are the setbacks and how we measure them. So I kind of wanted to show here, like, in the rear, for instance, you see there's a setback to the structure, then as you go to the second floor, there's a balcony, and our code allows for, like, the balconies, once you hit the second floor, to encroach into the setback, like, you know, four feet, for example. So kind of wanted to, people to visualize what we're looking at, and, and how that's measured and determined, so that is strictly kind of what, what this example is for.
So is it, what you're telling me is it's being proposed, that that would continue to be allowed, the overhang, encroaching into the setback?
We, we do allow those for balconies, yep, throughout.
That would be, that would continue?
Within reason, I'm assuming, we haven't really talked about that, yeah. So we are, within reason, yeah, that we would still allow for those encroachments for the balcony, and they're, they're pretty specific about what's allowed and how it's allowed.
Okay.
For instance, you wouldn't be able to have, you could have the cantilever, but once you put a column there, it changes.
That starts it over, yeah, changes the measurement.
Correct.
Got it.
One thing I, I did want to talk a bit about is, a great thing with us being, working on the zoning, is we're able to definitely listen to community, and Plan Commission and Board Feedback to change things that, that people might not like currently with our current zoning code, like, certain things, like, on, on the beach side, you're able to restrict certain uses if you got, because I, I know there's been concerns about rooftop uses, so you can write in the zoning code what it's restricted to, we'll probably eventually have to do the alcohol ordinance separate to restrict certain alcohol from not being allowed on that side of the beach, or on the beach side, but that's, it's important, like, to realize, like, now we have the chance to fix certain things within reason and what, what we're able to do, but if people have, like, concerns about, like, kind of roof, rooftop noise, or, like, there's certain things we can restrict, or, or require additional sound deadening, or in, or on a positive note, with the floor area that, that we have down there now, you'd have more sound deadening, because you'd have more areas enclosed instead of open, because one of the things with Barefoot Beach Club is it has a lot of open areas to keep the FAR around that, was it one point oh-two? That, that would, if, if the FAR allowed previously was higher, it would have been enclosed, and, and with windows and air, and, and the noise...
The hallways would be enclosed.
Yeah.
Also, one thing we've talked about is, Andrew was talking about with, you know, rooftop bars or rooftop amenities, possibly having that as a special exception use, meaning you would have to go to the special magistrate, you would also notify all your neighbors, so we've written that into, I think, the special exception as of right now, just, you know, as our proposed draft, thinking of that going forward, having that as a special exception use.
Would that be coming in front of us before it goes in front of the board?
Absolutely.
And the community, like, we're, we're gonna be doing workshops this, this month. Do we have the dates some?
Yes, the thirteenth, the eighteenth, and the twentieth.
So we'll be getting community feedback, because we want to make sure, because now that's the chance for the community to kind of correct things that, that they might have had issue with, with our zoning code, and now we can actually fix it, at, at least in that area.
Good stuff.
So I've got a couple of questions about the setbacks, and are we finished with that? Are we discussing it?
No, we can, we can go into discussing it, and what works here, or what works in the setbacks.
Well, in terms of the commercial core, that you have nothing in the front and twenty in the back, where it used to be ten and ten. I mean, you know, and I guess, I, I, are these setbacks based upon what's kind of existing there? Is that where you came up with these numbers?
So anything in the red is a proposed change. It's really kind of our attempt is like, here's a starting point, let's just discuss it. So right now, in the commercial core, it's C1, so there's none in the front, and then on the side, well, it's ten feet on one side, and in the rear, it's, let's see, twenty-five, it looks like. So that's what's in the C1 zoning district right now. As we know, a lot of those buildings don't meet that criteria, so where you see on this column, on the ground setbacks, that's where we're still collecting data, so you can see some of them are filled out, but commercial core, we don't have all the data there. But we know that a lot of places in commercial core, as well as traditional village, both of them are C1 zoning districts, they don't meet that, the setbacks that are currently in the zoning code.
Well, I'm looking at it from a standpoint of the commercial core is the orange in the new Activity Center area.
Yes.
Which to have zero setback in the front means that you're gonna be right on the street, and right on the street is a hazard at Sweet Brunette's. I mean, I don't even know, you know, and, and so that's, I think that's a major problem, you know, so if you have twenty foot in the back, you know, it, it doesn't make sense to me, you know, being right on top of the sidewalk property line.
So it's, the commercial core is this area, this orange area right here. So we have the garage, and then a few, like, Delosas, and then we also have...
That's mostly walking traffic area.
Yeah, it's walking, walking areas.
All inside the village core.
On the left side, the right side is all open and nothing's, all rock, rock parking lots.
There's buildings here, and then some over here, and then Walts is over here, too.
Well, yeah, so the left part is all basically developed, that's where the parking garage is, and, and the parking garage, and the little hotel.
Mm-hmm, right here.
Right, and Delosis and the boardwalk.
Well, Delosis is in the, the orange area.
Yeah.
Yes.
And there's zero setback, right now.
In front?
On both sides, they're right up on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I know that they have, I think, an awning on Boardwalk Place, like, right over here, so I don't know if that, that might not be to the property line, they might have a little bit of a setback there. Oh, good idea.
There we go.
Oh, yeah, I think they have a zero, and they just do sidewalk cafe.
Well, to some extent, I guess my point is, zero there is not bad, because you got a huge sidewalk, so I'm just, you know, and, and, and the thing is, not knowing where the actual property line is, is where the gray area is, and I'm sure people will look at, you know, zero setback, well, you know, you're, you're right on the road, basically.
The one thing that we are, we always check on, so this isn't always 100% accurate, but it's, it's pretty close on where the property lines are, so this might be a little You really have to go to the, see, so this is over, obviously, it's a little off.
But there are rules about ingress and egress and safety associated with that, so you wouldn't end up with a situation, I think, maybe you're thinking, you step out of a building and bam, you step into a road, so that, there are ingress, egress requirements that we wouldn't allow for, for that to happen, so, yeah.
Well, I mean, like I say, I'm just, you know, as John said, you know, we're paying for people that didn't really care previously, and now we're, we're trying to do the fight. I mean, you know, and that's why I think we're all trying to be so adamant about getting all these things correct at this time.
Definitely, and one thing that we've talked about internally, too, let me go up, is having, you know, if it's two stories or higher, having, requiring a setback, but requiring you to have, oh, where am I, requiring you to have something like an awning, or a structured awning, something like what they have over here, say if, I mean, this property, they own John's Way and across, so, but say, if this was the property line, you know, you would have to have some, some setback, so it's not, doesn't seem like a huge box that's very opposing right on the sidewalk. So that's something that we've also talked about, and we want to also explore and look at other Main Street zonings in Pinellas County and other areas that are similar to John's Pass.
Well, I mean, like I say, that looks, that's pretty. I mean, you know, so, and if they're, you know, so long as you have enough walking area in front of it, and I guess also, nobody's really gonna be driving fast down there, so it's not like it's a blind corner, like at Sweet Brunette. I mean, you know, but like, that was, that was an oops, and, you know, fortunately, we're not dealing with that area at this point, but I, I don't know as to whether or not if we, and, and I, this is a question, do we have to correct all the oopses that were done before?
How can you?
Well, I, I, well, I think that's what they're kind of... Well, I, well, I think that's what they're kind of saying that they're trying to do to keep everything in.
Yeah, I would say not with the setbacks, so really just trying to see, it was mostly for the intensity and density, a lot of the density, so that's really covered with the future land use change and all of that. I think the setbacks, it's really imagining, well, how, how does this area function? How do we want it to function in the future? What works? What's typical of, you know, all these character districts?
Well, I guess then also possibly as an example, that rock lot right over to the right there. If you say what can be put, what can be put on that property?
Right.
You know, as an example, using these current guidelines or what you're looking to do, what can be developed there?
The usage of each, of, all your storefronts have different uses. Like a coffee shop has a lot of people in and out, but a sewing shop may not. So your setbacks wouldn't, would have to depend on the usage, and if you had a two-story building where the second story was dumped into the first one.
Setback a little bit more.
Then you'd have to have a better or a bigger setback. Or an area that, that building, when you stepped out of the building, wasn't in a danger zone, such as, you know.
Just one thing I wanted to remind you guys of, too. Back when a lot of this was done, the ADA requirements weren't in place or weren't being properly followed, so ADA will drive a lot of what ultimately happens to these buildings, so that forces the safe, you know, stepping in, stepping out, and access to, so you don't see that, but anything new coming in or anything rebuilt would have to adhere to all those requirements as well.
I think, I think what I'm kind of hearing is, right, not only like pedestrian safety, but we all are saying, right, we're at this moment where we can kind of help make this space and make some updates that are better than what maybe we've had in the past. And I think really what we're looking for is something that's a little bit more pedestrian-centric, because like right now, you know, kind of, some parts of John's Pass feel like a big parking lot, and feels like just cars, and that's not what it's supposed to feel like, in my opinion. And I think the beauty of, versus the building code regulations and things like that, the beauty of what we have, the ability to do from the planning side and then from, on our side is, I think if you want to defend against some of those things, we have to get creative with what are some pedestrian-centered regulations that are going to be required to be followed within setbacks, within new developments, within things like that, because otherwise, it's just going to still be a car-centric kind of environment. So I would say, as much as the, you know, the densities, intensities, and building heights and all that are great, what I personally would like to see, and kind of to what y'all are talking about, is with setbacks, maybe more landscape-focused, you know, defensive landscape focus, things that deter people from driving too quickly, you know, something that feels a little more walkable versus the middle of the road, you know, a double-line road down the middle of the John's Pass Village. That's personally what I would like to see, and I think that would capture a lot of the concerns. You know, yeah, I mean, that was, that's kind of a good example, if you go back to that road. I mean, that right there, people can fly through there. This road right here, if you go back down that little alley, and I know it's a little smaller, when you, when you drive next to that landscape like that, you automatically, you slow down, and you, you know, so things like that. I think if we can get some ideas as to how can we regulate and implement more things that allow for a more walkable environment, I think that solves a lot of, and it's actually within the power of planning and zoning versus building regulations, so, I don't know. I mean, some of those street improvements would most likely, like if it's on a local street, fall in the city, they do, like, let's say you wanted to do speed table or raised crosswalks, that would, that would need to be in our CIP. Because, which we can definitely discuss, but I don't think it would, I mean, the land development regulations, I think would be more like, talking about like minimum sidewalk widths, certain, like, because we definitely want to make sure pedestrians have enough room, and if restaurants want to do sidewalk cafes, that there's enough room for that, and pedestrians and people in wheelchairs can all get down. So there's certain things we can, yeah, we definitely want to make it pedestrian-focused, and when we show our draft, our LDRs, I think will show that pretty well, but some of the other stuff is probably going to have to be infrastructure, that will have to be in our CIP and Public Works.
Yeah, I think we're getting a little out over our skis right now.
Yeah.
And getting too, too much in the weeds, no pun intended, with the landscaping thing, but I think the height and the height, the density, the setbacks, generically speaking, are what needs to be addressed first. The rest will come in when they go to the building department for a site plan approval, and that'll be part of that process, right? I don't know that we need to get down in there right now, because we're just looking at the, the activity centers and taking care of the new big picture items right now. We'll have to drill down to that later, but we've got to get, you know, phase one, phase two, phase three, as we get deeper and deeper into it. I don't think we're going to cover it all now, and we certainly can't go back and fix everything that's not.
Exactly.
Not been done correctly. There's no way to unwind that stuff, but we can do the best we can going forward.
Another thing that we've talked about is having a different sign code for commercial core, traditional village, boardwalk, but right now, we really just want to get the framework done and then.
Yep, I agree.
Visit that after we get the, the basics of zoning, but then after we do that, we definitely do want to address signage, at that time, do landscaping.
Safety.
And just make it more robust, but just getting that framework.
Yeah, I think for, for what we're doing now, let's stick to this stuff, the height, the setbacks, you know.
But those things are still.
Yeah.
Because like when we started this process with the village, it was for a major storm event, so we had all this in place ahead of time. So like my question is, if something is non-conforming, would they be grandfathered in to go back to what they had, or would they have to then follow all this, the new guidelines?
It depends on what it is. Our non-conforming section of the code is, it's kind of lengthy. I know with like residential, a lot of them, you can build within the same existing footprint, you can extend along an encroaching side if you go to planning commission, if your lot is within this many feet wide, if you're in these zoning districts. So it's, it's a little difficult saying on the, on the cusp of, is that allowed or is it not? I know that the floor area ratio for commercial buildings is not, so that was one of our big driving factors as well, is we need to get this done, we need to make sure that these commercial buildings can stay or can be renovated and not just how they are right now. If a storm comes, they can't rebuild. So that was one of our big driving factors of that.
So then my big question is, with the three workshops that we're having, and then the more fine tuning that you guys are going to be doing, will we be seeing this again next month with what the actual numbers are going to be proposed?
Yeah, that's our plan, is just to bring this back every single month, give you updates, get more input from you, so you can start seeing our drafts, and so it's not just, hey, surprise, here's this, do you like it? So it's really, we want to get your input, we want to get public input, we want to incorporate all of that into the land development regulations.
And, and I think that's good, and that's where I think we've gotten to a point, we try to not pass anything on that has any ifiness, and I'm not sure whether or not anything has gone on, you know, beyond us, you know, that we haven't approved. So it's just kind of a matter of what, trying to make sure that when it gets pushed onto the board of commissioners, that we have basically all signed off on it.
Mm-hmm. Once we feel ready, once all of you feel ready, and we feel like this is a good draft, then that's when we'll bring it forward. But we want to make sure that we get as much input and that everybody feels very comfortable with it.
Could we talk about some of the projects on the Gulf related to coastal construction control line setbacks? Could we?
Yeah, let's push that to the planning commission discussion, we'll let them finish this part, and then we'll jump in on that.
All right. Because that's, that's also setback-related.
Sure. Well, this is activity center plan, though, stuff, right now.
We're going to talk about it in the activity center as like a zoning.
Do we have, do we have CCC line in the activity center?
Yes.
We do.
Yeah, on the beachfront condo.
Okay.
So then ask it in relation to that, go for it.
So let's.
Let's do that.
So the setback in R3.
I sit corrected.
Is the CCCL. So that's, that's what the setback is, and everything on the west side is R3. Yeah, it should be.
Yeah, I mean, I have it cut along the coastal construction control line, like it doesn't, this is where it is.
Mike.
Your mic's off, I think.
Oh, yeah, your microphone's off, Andrew.
I have the boundary set along, I made sure the boundary was set along it. So anything landward of the, like on this side is landward of the coastal construction control line, and anything on the other side of it is on the beach, on the beach side, and on our future land use map, I think it's preservation. But I can pull up the property appraiser to show where, where it is.
Yeah, so on traditional village, you're looking to decrease it from 25 to 18.
So, so is that, is that from coastal construction control line, the setback?
Yeah, that's like down the inland side. Talking about, we'd probably be in John's Pass Resort and Transitional.
Yeah, so this is, this is right down here is John's Pass Resort, and then it goes to Transitional over here.
Not from the rear property lines, you, you, the setbacks from CCC line, not the, not the property line.
It's from the, yeah, it's from the CCCL. And I think how it's written right now in the R3, all of this is R3, is the setback is the CCCL. So you can build to the CCCL.
Yes. But, but now you're proposing to give it 25 feet or so setback? Yeah.
No, I think it's a.
No, you're talking about a different district.
Well, the traditional village.
You're talking about?
Right, where's our?
Well, you're two, you have two, you got John's Pass Resort and then Traditional Village.
Transitional, so you do have things across the street on the east side, so that's where, I guess it's not really clear, we know because we see it all the time, but the C3, C4, and R2, those are all on the east side of Gulf Boulevard. So we would have, how we have the draft right now is, okay, you're in Transitional District. If you're on the east side of Gulf Boulevard, these are your setbacks. If you're on the west side of Gulf Boulevard, these are your setbacks. So the, yeah, the rear setback on the beach side, on the west side, right now in the R3 is CCCL, and we just, we kept that for, for right now. I think it's 25 if you're not on the beach side, if you don't have the CCCL on your property. There's a few properties like that. So things, these properties right here, so we'd be looking at, at that as well. All these properties in front of Gulf Lane, obviously, they don't have the CCCL, so they have to have a setback, and right now it's 25 feet.
Is the green line, is that the CCC line?
Yes.
And the property lines are maybe another 50 feet, in some cases out?
Yeah, in some cases.
Waterward? Because a lot of, I mean, look at the whole bunch of buildings there, they're already constructed up to CCC line.
Exactly.
And why change it now?
They're still allowed to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're, they're allowed to build up to the CCCL on this side. When you're an interior lot and you don't have the CCCL, then the rear setback of 25 feet kicks in.
Oh, I see, okay, all right. I'm sorry, I was confused.
Oh, it's not CCCL minus 25 feet.
Oh, correct, yes.
It's CCCL.
The minus is kind of or.
If you're beachfront, if you're not, it's 25 feet.
Okay.
Trying to smush everything into one, one Excel document.
I was looking at that myself going, why do they go from zero to 25 feet? That's going to be problematic, like sea breezes on, or not sea breeze, but some further south are right on the control line.
Yes, okay.
So it's, if you're on, if you border the control line, you can go right up to it. If you're not a property that abuts the control line, it's 25 foot setback.
I mean, you can go up to it as long as your setback from the real property line could be whatever it is that you want it to be.
Right.
Depending on where the property line is.
Right.
One challenge, especially between Gulf Boulevard and Gulf Lane, is when Gulf Boulevard was widened back in the day, it, it took a lot of the frontage off these properties.
Yeah.
And as you can see, a lot of these lots are, some of them are only like 84 feet, so.
That's mine, by the way. We, no, not the lot, there's a house on it right next to Midyear North. Oh, no, that's a different one, sorry. Anyway, I have one right there, same effect. There's no back, no front yard because Gulf Boulevard came up in front of it, very little front yard.
There's like a lot of kind of, that, that right now would require a variance to be able to build a house there, but.
Great.
But one thing we could write in the zoning is if you're building a, I don't know, a single-family home, it only has to meet these setbacks if the lot is like less than, I don't know, 4,000 square feet or.
Yeah. That one actually is mine. Mine's the rear setback violation, not front right now.
Yeah.
I can tell you all of these, you can just tell they're all non-conforming.
Yeah.
Legally non-conforming, built before the zoning code, just like what Andrew's saying.
Yeah, I've got about a 12-inch side setback and all kinds of crazy stuff over there. But that narrows the problem, we can't, we can't pass, or we can't recommend changes that, and then make those comply, they're going to, they're going to have to stay the way they are, right?
Exactly.
All right, it is. So we got to do the best for the most.
Exactly. So you're looking at what's in the character district, what matches, where, where do you see the future? Yeah, not, not just, oh, this one is built right on the property line, so let's do zero foot setbacks everywhere. But really looking at the character districts and what, what makes sense.
Character.
All right, good stuff. What else we got? We good there?
I think so, yeah.
All right. Nicely done. Does that cover everything for what you guys have, need to bring us?
Yeah, and then next time, we'll bring information from those meetings that we have.
That'd be great.
You are obviously welcome to attend, we'd love to see you. And what else? We'll bring updated draft, so you'll be seeing that, you'll be seeing that every month. So we will want input every month. I think that's all that we have.
A lot of the setbacks are also fire department-related, so if you go closer than 10 feet, then you have to worry about like a two-hour wall or.
Yes, so we'll definitely be bringing the drafts to fire department, to building, and to Public Works.
Yeah.
All right, I guess that brings us to our next meeting, which is scheduled for May the 6th at 6:00 PM, same location. Oh, is there any discussion? I think we got Hoos' point about the control line, right? Good. Anybody else got any discussion? Any other discussion? Good. All right, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.